Test of the City of Black audio system.
I want to ask, ready to stand Pastor Mulberry, are you there Mulberry, excuse me?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Okay, I would ask you to say the invocation if you would please, let's all stand.
Father, we thank you once again for this day, we thank you God for your love and kindness, and for the multitude of your tender mercy. God, we take this moment to say thank you for all that you've done for us and all that you're doing. We pray that you will continue to look on this world, this troubled world, troubled nation, troubled people. We pray there, God, that you will have mercy and help. Bless us now as we come together to do the business of this commission. We pray, God, that your blessed hand will be upon your people and that you will bless them with understanding. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen. Thank you Pastor Mulberry. Mr. Barnes, would you lead us in Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Sir.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. Ms. Krantz, will you call, roll please?
Chairman Kilabre.
Here.
Mr. Deluge.
Here.
Mr. Wallace is absent for the record. Mr. Barnes.
Here.
Ms. Rawls.
Here.
Ms. Wilson.
Here.
Ms. Owens, here, we have a quorum, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Krantz. Now, the appeal procedures, next part, communication. Is there anybody that needs to do anything with the ex parte communication? And I will read the appeal procedure. Any person willing to appeal to any decisions made by the planning board with respect to any manner considered at such meeting will need a record of the proceedings and for such purpose may need to ensure that a verbatim record of the proceedings is made, which record includes the testimony and evidence upon which the appeal is to be based, Florida statutes 286-0105. Okay. Everybody read the minutes from our last meeting? Do I hear a motion to accept the minutes? Is there a second?
I'll second.
With a proper motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Public comments, is there anybody here that would like to make anything, any kind of public comment towards what we're doing today? Okay. Move on to regular business. Case number PB 22-15, request to vacate the right-of-way portion of easement located within the Putnam County Business Park on parcel number 04-10-26-000-0010-001. Or, excuse me, 0010. Ms. Walsh?
Thank you, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. First, I'd like to say happy early birthday to Ms. Bebe Wilson. Thank you, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, first I'd like to say happy early birthday to Ms. Bebe Wilson. And then I'd also like to introduce our fire chief in the back of the room, Mr. Chris Taylor.
Hi, Chris.
And our new fire marshal, Mr. Chad Branford. Hi, Chad.
In case you didn't know him, you probably already did, but just to make sure. So, we have received a request to vacate the ingress and egress portion of an easement in the PRC, on the PRC Way property in the Putnam County Business Park. The applicant has asked, again, only to vacate the ingress and egress portion of the easement, but retain what's there for the water and sewer lines that are beneath there already. Part of that easement that he's been also ran through the property adjacent to it, and it was quick claimed over to Comarco, but it was never officially put before the Putnam County Commission for complete abandonment. So it still shows up on the maps. It's still kind of sort of there. It's just a housekeeping thing that they'd have to do would be to pass an ordinance to vacate that easement, that portion of that easement. There are no utilities under that easement, to my knowledge, but there is a connection there at the property line between the two for Comarco's water and sewer. That's why the line runs through the existing easement behind 7220 PRC Way. The applicant has plans also to expand the existing building and construct a new building to the north of the existing one that would mirror the size of the expanded existing building. Those plans are under review at this time in my office and also at Putnam County. You are welcome to listen to a presentation if Ms. Sutton would like to give one, and it's your pleasure. Otherwise, I wouldn't entertain any questions. Ms. Sutton, would you like to give a presentation? I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, that's probably your purview. I was just checking to see if she was online.
Well, Ms. Sutton, are you there?
Yes, I am here. If you're ready, I have a short presentation. I can, it looks like I'm not able to share my screen right now, but I am happy to scroll through what's on the screen. I think Ms. Walsh is sharing, so this is just a brief summary of the easement vacation. Ms. Walsh explained our request. Basically, part of this easement has been quick claimed deeded to the property owner to the east. We have a part on our property, and because of the nature of the business that's going in on this site, they will have to fence the property. And so, just to keep things clean and handle, you know, all those housekeeping items, we want to be sure that the ingress/egress easement is removed, although the utilities will remain, because it will be fenced off from the public. This runs behind the existing building. As Ms. Walsh explained, we have plans for an additional building to the north of this. But there is no development proposed over the easement. We're just trying to tie up the loose ends, since the public will not have access and ingress/egress availability any longer. So I think if you scroll down, there's more of a exhibit that shows the area, which should have been in your backup, so this runs along the backside of the 7220 property. And then, if you scroll a little bit further, Ms. Walsh had this in her presentation as well. It's sort of that gold-colored line. And as she mentioned, the utilities will remain there with the easement rights required for that will just prevent public access to this area, because it belongs to the private business now. So that's just more detail from the survey. If you all have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Anybody got any questions or comments? Just out of curiosity, and I know this doesn't have anything to do with what we're doing today, but I'm just, curiosity killed the cat. When you say that you go and put a new building to the north of that, so out there where the loop is in the building, is that where the new building, going into the building, is that where your new building will be?
Yes, so the drive that has kind of a circle drive, porticochet, the building will be to the north of that and over some of the existing parking area.
Okay.
Yes.
If there's no questions or comments, I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I would like to follow staff's recommendations and make a motion that we approve the proposed ingress/egress easement vacation for the western portion of the South Loop Road per the attached sketch in Exhibit A and the legal description in Exhibit B.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
I'll second one.
Okay, George. We have a motion and a second. So any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you, Ms. Sutton.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Yes, ma'am, you too. Staff, do you have anything else that you'd like to say?
I do not. Thank you.
Ms. Krantz?
Not this time, sir, but thank you.
How is it?
Board members?
How is it that we can't just, since the road is put in, I'm assuming that the easement was placed before the roads went in or before it was plotted out? Is it just for utilities? How is it that?
That easement was put in initially with the the idea that there would be a loop road throughout that subdivision, that business park subdivision. So if you can, Sunny, can you pull up the diagram, please?
Yeah, that wasn't clear to me that there was gonna be an additional.
Right, okay.
You were gonna have a loop in that easement?
Well, it was already put in there. Okay. Right, so that's the south, that's the north and south loop road, uh huh. And so, that was put in when the subdivision was planted.
Sewers?
So now it's just utility easement?
So now it will just be a utility easement for.
Okay.
Legally, it's, until this motion, it's still a road, so the public could walk that fence line.
And I don't think we should be building businesses and having public walk behind the businesses.
So it would just eliminate it.
Yeah, right. That would eventually become a road and then more businesses would come in.
Right, 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 and there were separate parcels to the north and south of that road where the existing building is, and then the
parcels to the south of it on the other side of the brown line were separate parcels. With the idea that, of course, not every business is going to need the same size parcel.
So maybe in the future, maybe we can add both, add the street and add more businesses to both sides and have.
I'm sorry, ma'am?
No, maybe, I was thinking, maybe in the future, they can do the other side and have that open.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
But the other side has separate parcels as well. So what the applicant did was they went in and they purchased
the whole thing.
My, my apologies. The other side does not have a whole bunch of separate parcels. There's one large parcel.
Didn't they purchase that also?
They did not. They purchased the property between the pink line that runs north and south and the PRC Way and St. John's Avenue.
Yeah.
So there were a couple of separate parcels in there, and there was part of a larger parcel, the big parcel for the whole park, that they cut out of it. And so now they've kind of, they now own, like I said, that rectangle between PRC Way, St. John's, the pink line, and Wes Larson Boulevard. Because that's what they needed for their business model.
Yeah.
Any other board members have any comments or want to talk about anything else? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion for adjournment. We have a motion for adjournment. Second?
Oh, I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.